It's not a state, work really is to me.
The new one?
No, he is.
Oh.
I just want to make sure.
Question my questions about whether or not the election is announced.
Yeah, I know, I already looked at all this stuff, we're not doing this tonight.
No.
I've got it. Test how you're about to get a call in America, canines, shoes.
I talked to an expert and says this, I said this, we've talked to three experts.
Okay.
Everybody's an expert down there, nobody knows anything. I'll try that tomorrow, write me a note and I'll do that.
Thank you very much.
This special call session is per Kent Commission perception point nine, session. Madam Court, would you please call roll?
Mr. Peters.
Here.
Julie Campbell.
Here.
Jerry Crawford.
Here.
Nathan Brown here. Mike Heel.
Here.
Al Beahan.
Here.
Ben Teague.
Hold on. That wasn't out. Shoot that, I didn't, no, here.
Ronnie Travis.
Here.
Charles Juan Hammond.
Brendan.
Elsie Kessler. Isaiah Ryan Stack.
Here.
Danny Moore.
Here.
Ross Carlin.
Here.
Gibson Henderson.
Here.
Bobby Dees.
Present.
Randall Jenkins.
Here.
Larry Miller.
Here.
John Lewis.
Here.
Ray Adams.
Here.
Sonia Tho.
Present.
Scott Seaman.
Present.
David Wing.
Here.
Robert Carroll.
Here.
Robert Goff.
Here.
Elsie.
Elsie.
Here. We do have a forum present, if this time if you would please, let's stand for a little prayer which is led by Mr. Campbell.
Yeah, we thought of God once again, Lord, you've allowed us to bow our heads, praise your holy name for what you've done for us this day. Lord, we do pray, God, for each member of Lord that's representing this board, Lord, in this county, God, we pray, Lord, that you give us the wisdom and knowledge, Lord, and the understanding that we need, God, to guide this county to where it should go. Lord, if we would come in one mind, one accord, Lord, and work together. Lord, we do pray today, Lord, to just give you the honor and the blessings that you richly deserve. God, we ask these things in your name, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge allegiance which is led by Mr. Robert Gonnell.
Salute, pledge, uh, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time we'll have public comments, just let me remind you that this is a special call meeting. In this particular instance, your comments will be limited only to any thing you would like to say about the election of commissioners to these standing committees. We have to limit it to that, it's not, so. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the commission? Yes, sir. Would please come forward and state your name.
My name is Sherman Connect, living in Rosemont, Tennessee, second district. This is concerning the election of the board. Like I said the last time, I have a problem with the way, I have a problem with the way it's done now, and I think that since it's not by the votes that they get, I think it should be the public and constituents of the second district in my district to question the motives of those that vote against it or vote for it. The last time I was here at eight thirty in the morning, I tried to talk to one of the commissioners over this issue. He stood at the door there, wouldn't open it. I shouldn't comment tonight because he's not here to defend himself. But I'm, if I can, I reserve it till when he is here. But he didn't have time for me, it was eight thirty in the morning, he didn't have time to talk to me. I said, can you come talk to me about this issue? And he said, I don't know what you've heard, but I, no. It'll have to wait till later. I was very much offended. Commissioners, your constituents, your district, whether it be in yours or not. When they come to talk to you about an issue and you put them away, I take offense to that. I, I just, I was just totally stunned by the, by what he, what he had done. He just absolutely threw his hand up at that window, right back there and said, no. No, late, no. So, that's my comment, I think Nancy Brown is qualified to stand on the budget committee. I'll let her stand with her qualifications, and I hope y'all take the time to question them and find out their qualifications. Whoever is will be appointed. But this standing time, if it's left up to the other two commissioners to vote on whoever's in this district, I think the public should be able to ask you questions, ask your qualifications, and then you can take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connect. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the commission before we get on with business? Chair has seen none, we'll close at this time, public comments section. The whole purpose of this meeting is the reconsideration and debate concerning the election of commissioners to these three standing boards or committees. And to do this, we're gonna be as detailed as possible, we're gonna take it one commission district at a time. All three commissioners in each district will have the opportunity to address the commission, to outline your work history, your educational background, and most importantly, which of the three main standing committees you feel that your background and experience best qualifies you for? I think we have to do that, we just have to do as thorough as we possibly can. Then, once each of the three have spoken within the individual districts, you'll have an opportunity to openly discuss any concerns, questions, issues that you have. Once that discussion is concluded within that district, then the clerk will call a roll. And we'll do a roll call, individual roll call, for each of those three main standing committees. For instance, the first will be budget, and you will respond with the person that you feel from your district best suited for that particular position. We'll do that for budget, we'll do it for rules and bylaws, and then we'll roll down to the third commission. If there's a clear, clear majority vote amongst those three, then those will stand. If there's not a majority, then it will be up to the entire commission to vote. And it just depends, you know, especially District Two, we have only two commissioners here tonight, it may be that the entire commission decides who from that district serves. But to start, we'll take it in proper order, we'll start with Mission District One, and we'll do this athmetically, so that it's extremely fair to all parties. So, Mr. Campbell, if you would please, come up, address this commission, tell them what you feel they need to hear in as far as these committee appointments are concerned.
Y'all know I'm from the first district, Carter County, which covers Stone Creek, huh? That side, road down through there. I feel that I can be on access to this commission. I was appointed here in Deep Ridge, passing from that day on, I run election, I elected, come in second, then I come in third one time. But I feel that I can help this county, I worked for this county for thirty-eight years, I believe that I can help right on. I know what's going on in this county, I'm out there, I'm with the public most of the time, and I get the inside of a lot of things that's going on. And I think that's what we need to do, is work together and pull together. And I believe that we can clear these things up in our counties, we can see things happen in our county. I believe that I can get this job done if you put me on, I'm on the, I need to rig the rules and bylaws thing.
No, just whichever committee you feel is your best suited for, based on your background and qualification.
Okay. On rules and bylaws and buildings, grounds, and law enforcement, health and welfare, that's the one that I need to be on. I do have a job, I don't have a lot of time for a lot of other plans, so I need to put this to.
No, sir. Is there anything else you'd like to speak about at this point? Once you're finished, then we allow the next commissioner to do likewise.
Okay, answering, anybody got any questions?
Mr. Peters?
You're Mr. Peters from the first district. I've served under the commission for well over eleven years. I have been chairman of several committees during that time. Highway, education, I can't remember all of them, but several during that time. I've had experience with, like I say, certain of my loose committees, and at this time I would like to be considered for budget committee. I've also been elected four times in my district, four different times. I was appointed once by this, by the commission to serve, so at this time I'd like to ask that I be considered for the budget committee. Thank you.
Mr. Crawford?
Hi, everybody, my name is Jerry Crawford, I'm in District One, and I would like to be considered to be left on the utilities, highway, safety investigation, software, western landfill committee. I have been in law enforcement practically entirely in my life, I have total thirty-four years with law enforcement, that's state plus city weeks. And as far as investigative work goes, whatever it would pertain to, I believe I could be, or I would be qualified, or I am qualified. I have a worthy knowledge of solid waste and landfill positions, and not necessarily positions, but what goes on there and what's the, what could be after. I have, well, not really familiar with the educational department, however, I'm here to learn, and I believe I'm qualified to do so. I've obtained a degree in criminal justice for what I was going through school, and my twenty-one years of military service, I studied, took a lot of college courses in all aspects of education, so mainly I would hope to be considered for the position in the number three utility, medical education, so on so forth.
At this time, I would be interested, and I think most of the people in the gallery would be, open discussion amongst you three gentlemen, as far as your position. I notice, Mr. Campbell, you feel that you'd be better served on the rules and bylaws and buildings and ground, law enforcement, and Mr. Peters, you've indicated you'd like to be on budget, and Mr. Crawford, on the other hand, says that he could work on the highway. My only question, I guess some of these others, was, Mr. Campbell works at the highway department and knows it, and probably just as experienced as anybody up there, and again, you've been in law enforcement for many years, so give me some discussion here, so that we can satisfy, you know, your positions on these things.
Mr. Chairman, I work at the highway department, you know, I've been there. You know, I feel there could be a lot of conflict, you know, me working there on this. I'd rather not get on that committee right now, but you know, later on, some, some things may change or something, so.
You other gentleman have any comments at all?
No, I feel the same way, that it might be best, being C's employed by the highway department, not to serve on that committee, that's just my, my opinion. If I worked for the highway department, I would want to serve on that committee.
I really don't have any comment other than to say that since being a commissioner, and this has nothing to do with you really or anything like that, I would be apt to vote if the way I felt was proper and by my conscience and facts, rather than if there would be a conflict of interest, which there shouldn't be, in event that. That's not me, Dragothor, Dragothor's willing. But I'm here maintaining to do what I can do for Carter County and whatever just needs to be done. I don't really know where to go with this, because other than just to be honest and fair and listen to the facts, what have the facts that help or hinder members of the department, so.
I guess since a question's been raised, Mr. Harden, can, can you tell us, would it be a conflict if Mr. Campbell were to serve on the highway committee? If, you know, if that were his desire?
Well, certainly, it's, it's up to him, you know, legally, there, there could be some areas where a conflict could arise, yes. And if he feels more comfortable not serving on that committee, you know, that, that's certainly his decision.
Okay. Anything else at all, gentlemen, we want to give you the opportunity, this is your time.
The reason I say that, Mr. Chairman, is because, you know, you know I've worked around, I've worked there thirty-eight years, and I feel that you know, I wouldn't do the right thing, I always pray that everything I do, and I try to do the thing that's right. I feel right at this time, and I don't think bringing it to sell, man.
Sometimes, Mr. Chairman, it, it may not be, I'm sure he could serve honestly on that committee and everything, but sometimes it's the public's perception of things. Even though there's nothing, everything's about border, but to keep from having the public's perception of something wrong, sometimes it's better to do that.
Okay, gentlemen, you raise your case? Okay, with that, we're just gonna call a roll, just for you three gentlemen. And the first question will be, who do you want to represent your district on the budget committee? Respond with the name of that person as she calls the roll. And then we'll have two more roll calls after that, one for each of the three standing committees, so that we've made certain, we've dotted every eye across every thing. Madam Court, call roll, please.
Mr. Peters?
Uh, Peters.
Willie Campbell?
Peters.
Jerry Crawford?
Peters.
Okay. Mr. Peters, unanimous vote, and then for the next roll call, it'll be the rules and bylaws, buildings and ground, and so forth. So, Madam Court, call a roll.
Mr. Peters?
Campbell.
Willie Campbell?
Campbell.
Jerry Crawford?
Campbell.
And then finally, the utilities, highway, landfill, call a roll, please.
Mr. Peters?
Uh, Crawford.
Willie Campbell?
Crawford.
Jerry Crawford?
Crawford.
Thank you, gentlemen, let's move on to District Two, again, stay with the alphabet order. Nancy Brown will be first, please come to podium, take your case.
Hey, I'm Nancy Brown, second district commissioner, and I'm pleased to be here tonight, and I just want to let you know that I've served on the budget committee, this is my, this would have been my third term. I've been elected three times, top, I've been around three times. I have my certification from the state senate. And I wasn't born with a silver spoon in my mouth, so I've come from the skill of hard laws. And literally, I think the budget committee is a very important committee in this county. I've worked hard on it, and I would hope that you would consider putting me back on it, because I think I'd be a real absentee. I'm nowhere inside and out, but I know where we can check, where we can change. So, I just hope that you would consider me.
Mr. Hill?
My name is Mike Hill, and I am also a commissioner in District Two, and I'm here to act official for the budget committee as well. I recognize that Ms. Brown was on the budget committee for eight years, but here's my take on that. I, I think that as a commissioner, we all should cross train and become knowledgeable in all aspects of Carter County, as opposed to perhaps becoming entrenched for almost a decade on the same committee. I plan on trying to serve on all three of the major committees over the term of my service. I graduated from Appalachian State University with a degree in commercial art and computer science. Twenty-two years ago, or excuse me, twenty-six years ago, at age twenty-two, I incorporated my own business. I still work there today, done pretty well at that. I understand well from my background in business, matters pertaining to budgeting, finance, and leveraging of assets from a practical and not an academic standpoint. If a certification is what is required for me, I will be diligent in seeking said certification. I hope you all understand, I just got here, Ms. Brown just got first last year, I understand. That would be a goal I would set for the next couple of years.
I have started in 2009.
Two thousand and nine, I stand corrected, ma'am. So, anyway, nothing taken away from my esteemed colleague, but I think I have the chops to do this job, and I'm like a pear shake at a, at a chance of doing it before you guys, thank you.
Now, with Ms. Brown, Mr. Hill, any dialogue discussion or further consideration before we get into the vote process?
I just feel like that I know that really well. I didn't say it there, but I was self-employed for sixteen years, so I know that pretty well. Bad enough to where I had to work three dogs at one point, so literally, I take my money issue to this.
Mr. Hill?
Okay, so, is this thing on?
It is.
Okay. I don't, this isn't an ego thing for me, I'm not here with, to protect an ego or deceive status. I'm a willing worker, wherever I end up being placed, I will work in an exemplary manner. I'm basically here to advocate for the families and the citizens of this committee. I, I do think that I could glean the most knowledge straight out of the gate from the budget committee, because it does touch all aspects of, of all the other committees. Like I said, I'll be, I'll be a willing worker wherever I'm placed. I do have a service-minded mentality. I don't have, what else to, what else to say this time, thank you.
I'll be a willing worker in any committee, and I just feel like I could be a bit asky to the budget.
Okay, with that, then we'll, we'll head and take the roll call. Madam Court, again, this first committee will be budget, if you would please, call a roll.
Nathan Brown.
Brendan.
Brown.
Yeah, Brown.
Mike Heel.
And that would be Hill.
Okay, we have a time. Let's go to the rules and bylaws, same thing, Madam Court, call second, district commissioners.
Nancy Brown.
Uh, Michael.
Mike Heel.
Mr. Peters.
And then finally, utilities.
Nathan Brown.
Hill.
Mike Heel.
Brown.
Okay. That puts us in a situation where the full commission will have to vote. So, as Madam Court calls a roll. So, as Madam Clerk calls a roll, please respond to the person you feel should be appointed to Budget. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Hill.
Willie Campbell.
Hill.
Jerry Crawford.
Herr.
Nancy Brown.
Crawford.
Mike Hill.
Hill.
Al Meehan. Beth Dupuy. Ronnie Trivitt.
Brown.
Charles Montana.
Brown.
Elsie Testor.
Hill.
Isaiah Grinstadt.
Hill.
Danny Ward.
Hill.
Ross Garland.
Hill.
Timothy Holren.
Hill.
Bobby D.
Hill.
Randall Jenkins.
Brown.
Larry Miller.
Brown.
John Lewis.
Brown.
Ray Lyons.
Brown.
Sonia Koller.
Hill.
Scott Semlin.
Brown.
Phoebe Queen.
Brown.
Robert Carroll.
Brown.
Robert Goff.
Brown.
Brown will be on Budget. Congratulations. And now, if you would, Madam Clerk, we need to call a roll. For Utilities, and at this point in time, it looks as if Mr., of course, it hasn't really been decided between Meehan, other than these two that decided that, which is the majority, so that leaves Mr. Hill.
Yes, sir. I don't know if this is processed or not, but I would gladly sit on the Education Committee because my colleague, my distinguished Commissioner colleague from District Two, Mr. Hill, expressed a specific interest in the Rules and Bylaws committee.
Okay. With that, to the call a roll. All those in favor of Mr. Hill going to Utilities, Cable, Education, Highway, affirm the same aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. Mr. Hill will be moved on to the Utilities, Cable, Education, Highway, Special Investigations, and so forth. Okay? Now, we are District Three. Ms. Dupuy would be first on the list, and she's not here.
Mr. Chairman, if we've done society the most itself, we have to come up with-
We would like to have full, open reconsideration of all districts because we want to do this thing right.
Everybody knows me, I guess. This will be my fourth time on the County Commission. I served on the Highway Committee, and I was chairman of it. I served on the Building and Grounds, I was chairman of it. And Rules and Bylaws, and I was chairman of it. I've worked in supervision about all my life. There's probably been over a thousand people work for me one time or another. And I worked at the Medical Center about five years, based on the counts. I also have twenty-two year in the Army and National Guard. So, I feel like that I'd be qualified as long as I can be.
Thank you, Ms. Trivitt. Mr. V, Montana.
I have expressed an interest, and I'd like to say where I am, on the Utilities, Cable, Education, Highway, Special Investigations, and so forth. It appears to me that if we, if I want to be on the Education Committee, that I ought to be able to say a few words about where I came from in education. I don't have all of it I need, but I suspect some of us don't either, the rest of us. I have a B.S. degree from, in science, a master's degree in administration, and two-thirds of a doctorate in continuing education. Does that make me qualified to be on the Education Committee? I don't know, but we'll think so. The Highway Committee, I've been on the Highway Committee four years. It's one of the more active committees of the group here. I've enjoyed working with the people in the community on their highway problems. Some of that's going to be solved because they're present. Superintendent DeSagey's going to wait in the drop, the ditch lines, and that is the number one problem, other than speeding on the highways. The other, Special Investigations, we've been a little more active, as Chairman of that, a little more active than BCI. However, there comes a time when either we fish or cut bait with the information I've developed. I've been on the solid waste, landfills meeting. The one thing that I'm proud to say there is that we were not recycling plastic at all when I came on the committee. We now are recycling plastic. Does the fact that I was Vice President of Manufacturing for our corporation make any difference in, in knowing how to conduct business? Possibly. In the case of the highway, bridges has been my passion. All of you that have been here before know that. The infrastructure of the county as part of bridges needs, needs some help. But that's where I stand from a standpoint of, as a team player, I don't, I respect the fact that those that have been here longer need consideration because they have carried the ball. And the rest of us are just youngsters, maybe part, well, skewers, I might be the oldest. Matter of fact, I am though. Take care. Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, is there anything else you'd like to add, or any feel that you needed to cover before we take the roll call?
I think Mr. Montana made a wonderful statement. I'm more of a-
Okay, with that being said, Clerk will call a roll. The first question is, who do you want to represent your district on Budget Committee? Respond with that person's name. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Ronnie Trivitt.
Trivitt.
Charles Montana.
Trivitt.
Ronnie.
Okay, Mr. Trivitt's chosen. Now, let's go on to the next one, Rules and Bylaws. Just as quick as the clerk is ready, and I don't mean to rush Madam Clerk, just take your time, and you're ready, call a roll.
Ronnie Trivitt.
Dupuy.
Charles Montana.
Dupuy.
And now, finally, Utilities.
Ronnie Trivitt.
Mr. Trivitt.
Montana.
Or myself.
Or Montana.
Okay, there we have it. Mr. Trivitt on Budget, Ms. Dupuy on Rules and Bylaws, and Al Montana on Utilities. Now, let's go on to the fourth district. Mr. Isaiah Grinstadt. Mr. Grinstadt, so.
Mr. Chairman, a fellow Commissioner, I think you for giving me this opportunity to stand up and ask to be considered to be on the Rules and Bylaws, Building and Grounds Committees. I believe that, also, when that's law enforcement, I believe that my prior experience working with the Carter County Sheriff's Office has given me some insight into, into some technology avenues that they, that they have. It also gives me some insight into the detention center, which I frequented quite often while I was a member. I'm a new Commissioner, first term, and I might be the youngest Commissioner. I would like to, I believe that that would be a good commission to be on to get started, to start my career as a, as a County Commissioner to better help the citizens and the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Grinstadt. Mr. Testor.
My name is Elsie Testor, and I look like I'm smarter than my other two Commissioners in my district. I do think I have a little experience. I've watched most sides of this. I know what it is, try to pass a budget that's fair to the taxpayers. I've also seen cuts made at times in several of the offices that's really hurt that office holders and to keep, they've not been able to do their responsibilities, fulfill their responsibilities because of that at times. So, I, you know, I've sat on this commission for eight years, voted on these budgets, and looked at it. Sometimes I agreed, most time I didn't. So, with that, I feel like that I would like to be on the Budget.
Okay, Mr. Ward.
My name is Danny Ward, I'm a Departmental Commissioners, and I want to start out by saying, I don't know if what we're doing here is correct, even though we went through half the process. According to the two thousand and two bylaws, I think we're a little bit off, but since we're doing, let's go ahead and proceed.
The reason we're doing that, of course, after our September fifteenth meeting, County Mayor did receive correspondence from Open Records Council and National telling us that there was violations, and we're going to remedy those tonight, and this is the way that you do it. Go in extreme detail, making certain there's open and deliberate debate for these positions, and nothing's done behind closed doors, it's all in front of the public.
That is correct. I'd like to ask the Attorney, why you have these rules and bylaws if we're not going to go by them?
So, they're the laws, don't they?
I mean, I'm not trying, I'm not here to try to start any trouble. I'm just trying to state some facts.
Well, sir, I believe we are everyone by them. The Rules and Bylaws call for the three in each district to vote, and majority amongst those is the final decision, so that's indeed what we're doing.
I feel like, you know, we did do what the last Commission asked us to do, so we were in violation, and, you know, we were all in violation. But being that said, I've been in business for thirty-two years, I've been the progression for manager for somewhere around twenty-seven, so I own three different businesses. I think that I would fit best in the budget, but with my two other colleagues, if they choose to put me in another committee, I feel like that I can serve in any committee that's, that we have, because I'm a real rounded person. And I just feel like that whatever my constituents out of the audience want me to do, that's what I need to do. That's all I can say.
And that's the whole reason for this forum, to make certain that your wishes are known to every member on this commission, and hopefully that, you know, come to terms and make everything right. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I think when the new Rules and Bylaws gets together, when they need elected Chairman, we need to go back to these two thousand and two Rules and Bylaws and have this revised.
Well, you know, we mentioned that last time, but tonight, we're here for one purpose, and that purpose is absolute new consideration of all these appointments. We do not want, as a new commission, to send the message out to the public that we're not doing everything proper per state statutes, and that's what we're doing.
And I understand, and I just wish, you know, if we make rules, bylaws, we sort of stick to them. If we've been doing it wrong for twelve years, why haven't we been correcting it until now?
It's my understanding from talking with some of the previous members of this, Chairs and Mayors, at that time, all this was done in open forum, but apparently this time, there were some discussions outside of open forum, and that's why we're here today.
I think some of the problems arose based on the fact we have so many new Commissioners that basically, it just changed the way that was, that was done. In the past, there was just not much turnover, and everybody just kind of stuck to the same committees evidently, and I can't speak to the past. But the Rules and Bylaws that were adopted in two thousand and two say that the majority vote among the three in each district controlled, and that's all we're trying to do here tonight is to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak, everybody has, gets to be heard, wants to be heard, and the majority vote amongst three in each district will, will control who gets each.
Right, I understand that, and that's why I brought this to our attention, that, you know, if we're going to do something, let's start out on a new foot, go forward. If this is not right, let's correct it.
No, no one's saying that's wrong. I think what we're doing tonight is following that, but it certainly, you know, it would be up to you all, if you want to change that, how it's done, beginning next year, certainly. But I think what we're doing tonight is exactly following that, so I don't think anybody's saying that's wrong. I think we're just following the letter of the rule.
Thank you.
And if we had done this on the fifteenth, nice order of meat like we're having, I think it's right. You know, it gives everybody the opportunity. If we had done this on the fifteenth, we wouldn't be here doing this tonight, so.
Why didn't we have this brought to our attention then? I mean, I'm asking the question, you know, I'd like to know why. Why did we have to spend the county's money, come back in here, three thousand dollars to do this all over? Why?
Well, apparently, there was a letter that went out to Commissioners directing them to speak to each other before the meeting, that I had absolutely nothing to do with. So, I can't speak as to why that happened, but apparently, that was, that was a directive that was sent to each new Commissioner.
Unless you wanted to turn it, why as Mayor, you could have stopped, maybe said something?
He was sitting there probably.
Yeah, no, but you was Mayor. Couldn't you have said something then?
I did, but, sir, the directive had already been given by someone else who was the Chair, Mayor, it was outside his scope at that point, but I did address that, and it's neither here nor there, we're correcting it tonight. And once that directive was sent out, and you folks followed it.
But you also had opportunities with the fifteenth meeting of saying something at that time.
I did. I said that I didn't agree with it at that time, but we were so deep into it, then we would go ahead and leave it as it was standing at the time. We got a full confirmation vote from this commission to make that right, but the Open Records Council said that that in itself was not accurate. Okay?
Just to clarify that, the Open Records Council gave an opinion, for there to be a valid, I mean, a judge would have to rule that there was a violation of the Open Meetings Act. That did not happen, to my knowledge, there's been a lawsuit filed, but the Open Records Council sent a letter that in her opinion, based on the information she was given, there may have been a violation. So, to remedy that, this, this meeting was, was necessary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hardin, some of these discussions, most of these discussions was taken before these new Commissioners took the role of Commissioner Lakes. Is that illegal? No one Commissioners took that role.
Correct, and that wasn't the only allegation. If that were the only allegation, it might have been a different circumstance, but there was an additional allegation of, of a closed-door meeting during a recess of the actual Commission meeting. So, to remedy, you know, all potential violations, I feel like this meeting was necessary.
The violation occurred from Nancy Brown, took the two Commissioners back into the back room after I gave them a recess discussion.
Well, at this point in time, I think we're willing to see we're doing well now, and let's just continue on. The focus there in District Four, is there any other discussion that you would like to have amongst yourselves as per the position on the respective committees?
The only thing that I'd like to add is, I'm currently employed with Carter County School System. I do agree with me- I do agree with Danny, and when he stated that he believes a good conference of interest with him, we combined with him, I believe it would be a good conference of interest as possible with being on the Education Committee at this time.
Okay, Mr. Ward, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Testor. Okay, with that being said, the clerk will call the roll of the commissioners in the fourth district. The first will be budget. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Elsie Testor.
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 Isaiah Brownstaff.
Testor.
Danny.
Testor.
Budget.
Okay, Mr. Testor will be on budget. Let's go to rules and bylaws, when the clerk is ready, she'll call the roll, you respond accordingly.
Elsie Testor.
Brownstaff.
Isaiah Brownstaff.
Brownstaff.
Danny Ward.
Brownstaff.
Brownstaff.
Mr. Brownstaff will serve that district on rules and bylaws, and now finally Utilities Cable Education. When the clerk's ready, we'll call the roll.
Elsie Testor.
Ward.
Isaiah Brownstaff.
Ward.
Danny Ward.
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 Mr. Ward will serve fourth district on the Utilities Paper. If you will, we'll go to the fifth district. Ms. Dietz.
Good evening. I'm Patty Gooch. Two or three years ago, I became Dietz, most picture on Miss Gooch. But I was appointed to be on the commission about twenty months ago, when someone moved away, and then I ran this last election, and practically a new commission. But I have served on the Utilities Cable Education Highway and the Solid Waste Committee since I've been in the commission. I spent thirty-five years teaching in Carter County, so I feel like I'm well qualified to be on the Education Committee. The Highway and the Landfill Committees are very active. I've enjoyed being on those and learning, not a great deal, and meet the public, they're very active committees, and I've decided, we have two young men that's in the fifth district that have been elected, and I felt like that they were better qualified for the other committees, and that I decided to stay on this committee.
Ms. Dietz. Ms. Garlin.
Hello, I'm Ross Garlin from the fifth district, and, you know, we got together before, and like Ms. Dietz said, it was kind of her interest to, to be on the Utilities and Education Committee, and, you know, we kind of got together, whether the process was right or wrong, and, you know, we all agreed upon that. Tim and I, like she said, new commissioners, I chose to, you know, to be on the Budget Committee, something that, you know, and, you know, I talked to people that voted and told them I was willing to learn, and looking forward to representing people in this county. But it was a good fit for me. I have a family member who served on the Budget Committee for a long time, and I feel like, you know, I can, if I need some insight, or need some advice, or something like that, I can always get his opinion, and he's, you know, he's available. I do, some credentials, I serve on a scholarship committee that Miss Gooch was once treasurer, I'm the treasurer of that now. We have funds, you know, to about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and, you know, I'm taking care of the finances on that. I do own an apartment complex, a little duplex that was kind of handed down to inheritance, so that's, you know, a business that I do, do take care of, and, you know, rental property overhead with, with people coming in and out, so I do, do have some, some business experience as far as that goes, but mainly, when we got together, I wanted to do what, what we thought was right for the county, and certainly for the people in the county, and I thought this would be the best committee for me.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hall.
Good evening, my name's Tim Aldrin, graduate from Happy Valley, from the Kentucky State EDSU, Tennessee Technology, and I hope that's the end of. I've got twenty-five years of manufacturing experience, five years of HVAC experience, currently working over at Mountain Home, running the Boilhaus, Powerhouse, Energy Center. As far as health goes, I'm being considered for the rules and bylaws, building and grounds, law enforcement, health and welfare, recreation, and judicial. Was a first responder for approximately five years, so I have a little bit of background in health and welfare, building and grounds, I have responsibility for a couple of buildings at the VA. As far as the judicial and law enforcement, I've never been thrown in jails, that's the crux of my experience there. As far as recreation, I play three sports at Happy Valley, and baseball at Milligan, and I appreciate your consideration for the rules and bylaws, and I do agree with my fellow commissioners in the fifth district for their appointments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anything that any of you would want to add? Ms. Dietz.
I'd like to say that I have a business degree in EDSU, and I could have asked to be on the Budget Committee, but I felt like we needed a young gentleman on there, that he could get some experience, he could probably be there for several years if he chooses to run, and that was one of the reasons that I thought he should be on the Budget Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Dietz. Mr. Hall, or Mr. Garlin, anything else?
I would like to say that the way these committees are broken out, each one of us probably has stronger preferences, and basically, we could run any committee, I think, but as far as starting out, I think the ones that we have chosen within our district are best suited for what we have chosen.
I'll, I'll add, I know these are, I think, one-year terms on each committee, is that not true? And I think it's a great way for everybody to get experience, you know, starting off. I think we're, we're in agreeance, I think it would be all right how it's gonna work out, but, and it's all about, we're trying to work together anyway, I don't, you know, really know that, and to do what's right, and I think that is what is right with what we have planned out so far.
And I appreciate that, and I'm hearing it from the majority, clear majority, we all need to do what's right, and you're exactly right, these are one-year appointments, and come August of next year, September ones of New Year, and we can revisit this, provide the rules and bylaws committee at that time, decide this is the way we want to do it, and as long as we do it the way we're doing it tonight, I think everything will be fine. And also, even tomorrow night, once we get into the nominating committee, which we can't address that tonight, other than the fact that, I hope that everyone will be open-minded and allow as many of the commissioners as possible to find a seat on one of these committees. You know, in the years past, we've had certain commissioners that wanted to have a seat on four, five, six different committees, and I just hope and pray we'll find some balance here. Okay? Anything else, Al? Not seeing any more discussion, as the clerk calls a roll, we'll start with the Budget Committee, and who your choice is, please respond to the clerk, okay?
Ross Garlin.
Garlin.
Anthony Aldrin.
Garlin.
Bobby Dietz.
Garlin.
Garlin, Budget.
Garlin for Budget. Let's go to rules and bylaws, when the clerk's ready.
Ross Garlin.
Aldrin.
Anthony Aldrin.
Aldrin.
Bobby Dietz.
Aldrin.
Aldrin.
Aldrin, for rules and bylaws, now let's go to Utilities, when the clerk's ready.
Ross Garlin.
Mrs. Dietz.
Anthony Aldrin.
Sorry to be with heart, Miss Gooch.
Bobby Dietz.
Dietz.
Ms. Dietz will serve as fifth district commissioner on Utilities. Let us go to District Six, Mr. Jenkins, if you would, come up front, sir.
Thank you guys for your time. As it stands, we decided in our district that, with the rules set in place, that I would be on the Rules and Bylaws Committee, and I respect the law that's part of the rule that we have set in place right now. Mr. Mills, Mr. Miller, feel like we're more experienced, and more experienced in the other two committees, and I respectfully state where I'm at as far as rules and bylaws. Any questions? As far as budget, I feel like I could do any of them. Got twelve years of business experience, pretty fast learner, so it's pretty simple as far as any questions from you guys, any questions from you all. Us as a commission, I think we really do need to change the way we do it before next September. I think we've got that in mind, but other than that, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Mr. Lewis?
Hello, I'm John Lewis out of sixth district. Airfield, Little Mill, Happy Bay Forest, and I've got high school education, I've got the Plumville College. I've been on, employed in different small businesses, well, big businesses in my lifetime. I've got two years in the military. I've been on this commission four years, and I got beat for votes, and then I come back and won again, then on the third time, this time. I've been in business forty-four years, I have balanced the budget for forty-four years. And we decided, my two good colleagues back here, Noel, none against me, that y'all knows be best for the Budget Committee, so I have pride to come to all these meetings. Who I am, I'm on the committee, I'm not always about to attend these meetings, I feel like the only way you're gonna know what's going on in the county is to get to attend these meetings, and very few of mine I've missed in my four years, back at my time of my parents' stuff, that I probably would have afforded. And me and, I'd say, me and my two colleagues decided that this way we don't want to do the thing. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Miller?
Hi, my name's Don Miller for sixth district. We sit down and worked our arrangements out, if I had any trouble, that's what we all should be doing in the future, is to sit down and work together. We had no problem today, we thought Mr. Lewis was a senior man, he knew more with the new kids on the block, so, hey, the new kid on the block should step in line. But we had no problem with our committee, so we're fine. Everybody, Al?
Mr. Lewis, Mr. Jenkins, or Miller, is there anything else you want to add before we ask for a roll call?
No, sir, I think we have worked it out, and I think we are all right.
Okay, if the clerk calls a roll, respond with the person you feel is best suited for Budget in the sixth district.
Randall Jenkins.
Lewis.
Larry Miller.
Lewis.
John Lewis.
Lewis. Mr. Lewis has been chosen as Budget, and rules and bylaws is next. Please respond with your choice as the clerk calls a roll.
Randall Jenkins.
Jenkins.
Larry Miller.
Jacob.
John Lewis, Jacob.
And then finally Utilities.
Randall Jenkins.
Miller.
Larry Miller.
Miller.
John Lewis.
Lewis.
Mr. Miller will represent the sixth district on the Utilities. Now let's go to the seventh district, Ms. Culler, if you would, please come forward.
Sandra Culler representing the seventh district, I'm requesting to be on the Budget Committee. I'm the founder and manager of a very successful business, been in business for nine and a half years. I've been serving for six years, I've been on the landfill committee, and the Highway and Utilities, the Landfill, and on the Budget Committee, and I think I have the experience as a single person, being able to manage on a teacher's salary, to start a business and own a home, and I believe I understand it by budget.
Mr. Lyons.
It's an honor and a privilege to be able to stop and speak tonight. Didn't have the headset that I was gonna be able to do that, so it's gonna be off the cuff. We got together, the three of us, in Murfreesboro in training, as directed in the letter from Mr. Bowers, I think directed us to do that. We agreed among ourselves, the three of us, Mr. Simley, Ms. Culler, and myself, and I think that we did that real well. I think that all three of us in our discussion, including myself, have a background in budget. I have worked thirty-five years for the State Department of Tennessee in the services. I have been in the leadership role for thirty-five years. I ran an agency six years after that with the Board of Directors, and budget was a big thing to me, I was the executive director, so I pretty much had full control with my board to handle whatever came my way. I am honored to be here, I'm honored to serve on any committee, to be honest with you, and I think we looked at it kind of like Mr. Bowers' connection here with Ross Garlin. I think we looked at it the same way, that it's our first year, even though we have all the missing experience, it's our first year to try to, to learn, to try to do the right thing for the citizens of the county, and to do it in the right manner. But when it all boiled down, we thought that Ms. Culler had experience with budget. We, all three, agreed that she should be the person to serve on budget, and then maybe we could learn during this first year, and maybe next year, if Mr. Simley doesn't want it, maybe I could take it, or if he wants it, maybe I'll go on the Utilities Committee. That's just how we feel about it. And of course, I'm speaking for myself, Mr. Simley will have a chance in a second, but I'll work as hard as I can, just like I said in my campaign, to work not only for seven of the seventh district, but also all the county, all the county, and mainly what I said in closing last meeting, if you recall, I'm looking forward to working with all the department heads as well, and getting to know the full operation, not just the rules and bylaws, not just the building and grounds, not just the law enforcement, not just the health and welfare program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Mr. Simley?
Well, I don't know if I can follow Ray Lyons' off the cuff speech, I thought that was, that was pretty good. My name is Scott Semley, Seventh District, newly elected to the commission, lifelong resident of Carter County. I've got a mechanical engineering degree from Tennessee Technical University in Pittville, Tennessee, masters in business administration from King College. I've worked as a mechanical engineer, mechanical engineering manager and project manager for the better part of eighteen years now. In my current role, I manage in excess of a hundred million dollar government-funded defense projects over at Polston Army Ammunition Plant. I've served as treasurer for local sports leagues. I manage a household of six, managing a wife and four kids is quite an experience in and of itself. Me and my fellow commissioners, we did discuss these appointments in Murfreesboro. I expressed an interest in being on the budget committee. I think I can be an asset, no, I can be an asset to, to eat any of these committees. And I'll, you know, respectfully, you know, respect the outcome of our decision, thank you.
Any additional comments from either commissioner from the Seventh District? Seeing done, as the clerk calls a roll, respond with the name of the person you would want to represent in your district as the budget committee choice.
Ray Lyons?
Ms. Culler?
Sonia Culler? Scott Semley?
Semley.
To Ms. Culler, Ms. Culler will represent the district on the budget committee. Now let's go to the rules and bylaws, as the clerk calls a roll, respond with your choice.
Ray Lyons?
Ray Lyons.
Sonia Culler?
Lots.
Scott Semley?
Lots.
Mr. Lyons will represent the Seventh on the rules and bylaws, and now finally, utilities, as the clerk calls a roll, respond with your choice.
Ray Lyons?
Mr. Semley?
Sonia Culler?
Semley.
Scott Semley?
Semley.
Mr. Semley will represent the Seventh on, yes, on the utility. Now finally, the Eighth, Mr. Carroll, if you would go first, please.
Well, I will take a lot of your time, but I have many years of experience in business management. I have been experienced in building budgets and managing budgets. That was in the private sector. In the private sector, I think you might have to, and, and I don't know for sure because I've never served on the budget committee in government. I think in the private sector, you have to be a little bit tighter than you, than maybe in government, or that's my opinion, and I may learn that different. But anyway, I have had many years' experience in building budgets and managing two budgets. So I think I'd be better qualified to be on the budget committee. I don't have any degrees like some of these other fellows, but I did go to law school and I went to Tennessee, not, not Tennessee College, but I went to Tennessee Temple, down in Chadlibah, Tennessee, in college, but I didn't get any degrees there, but I did get one through my, my experiences. So I think that I'd be qualified and could work well in the budget committee, so that's what I'm asking for.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Mr. Garland?
My name is Robert Gahl. I have asked to be put on the highway committee because for the last four years I have served often on the highway and landfill committee when Mr. Hicks wasn't going to have to do so. The last year of this past term, I would put on the highway committee because Mr. Russ Hicks resigned off the business and stayed on the landfill. I feel like I've had enough experience in these two fields that I can do the job and do it right. And I hope that all of our commissioners that's here tonight have the same idea that I do, work together with the county and do what we can for the people and make us proud.
Thank you, Mr. Gahl. Mr. McQueen?
Good evening, I'll try to keep you brief, just one more speech in here, I think we'll wrap it up. I'm asking to be part of the rules and bylaws, law enforcement, health and welfare, recreational and judicial, that's kind of my passion and always has been, making sure that we have an efficient county government, especially in the law, law aspect of that. I want to work with the sheriff, with their local law enforcement, with the judges, with my constituents, as well as all the people that helped a leg to make this a better place. I think we all want to work together and work towards ends. So like I said, I'll keep you brief, I'm asking for the rules and bylaws, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McQueen. Any additional comments at all or considerations amongst yourself there in the eighth before we call for the roll?
I just have one, it's been really great talking with these guys, working with them, they got their heads in the right place and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Gentlemen? Okay, as clerk calls a roll, please respond with the name of the person who is on the eighth district on the budget committee.
Cody McQueen?
Carroll.
Robert Carroll?
Carroll.
Robert Gahl?
Carroll.
Carroll?
Mr. Carroll represents the eighth on the budget, let's go to the rules and bylaws, when the clerk's ready.
Cody McQueen?
McQueen.
Robert Carroll?
McQueen.
Robert Gahl?
McQueen.
And finally, the utilities, when the clerk's ready.
Cody McQueen?
Gahl.
Robert Carroll?
Gahl. And Gahl.
Mr. Gahl will represent the eighth. Let's take it one step farther. I would ask for a roll call vote, your affirmation at the end of the activities that have occurred here tonight, affirming each of these appointments within the individual districts. So if you're in agreement, when the clerk calls your name, respond with aye, if you don't agree, respond no. Mad Clerk, will you please call a roll, please?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are we voting on all the appointments?
All of them, as we have set here tonight with the individual.
Ms. Dietz?
Aye.
Willie Campbell?
Aye.
Jerry Prophet?
Aye.
Nick Brand?
Aye.
Mike Hill?
Aye.
Al Beahan?
Aye.
Beth Pugh?
Aye.
Ron Monchan?
Aye.
Elsie Hester?
No.
Isaiah Bransett?
Aye.
Daniel Wood?
Aye.
Ross Garland?
Aye.
Kevy Holborn?
Aye.
Bobby Dietz?
Aye.
Randall Jenkins?
Aye.
Larry Miller?
Aye.
John Lewis?
Aye.
Ray Lyons?
Aye.
Sonia Culler?
No.
Scott Semley?
Aye.
Cody McQueen?
Aye.
Robert Carroll?
Aye.
Robert Gahl?
Aye.
Twenty-one, twenty-two ayes, no, twenty ayes.
Twenty ayes, motion carried, so therefore, rest assured, the committees are locked in, confirmed as far as the standing committees are concerned. Just one brief note, I think the majority of you have put forth your requests to the mayor's office as to those other committees that you'd like to be considered for. If you haven't done so, please get that in for us tomorrow. And I really feel good about tonight. It did give us each and every one of us an opportunity to hear the credentials, backgrounds of our fellow colleagues that we didn't have before. So I think it's great, I don't think it's a human point, and hopefully going forward we'll do this each and every time, if you decide that this will be the way that you want to go. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Check it.
Okay. Motion, this, this conversation with Mr. Gahl, all favor?
Aye.